Preparing to livestream the video. So everybody be on your best behavior.
Was giving me a message, do I want to leave or not? No, I don't.
Impossible for me to be my best behavior, Vic, come on now.
Alright, oh wow, it does say that. Didn't know it did that consent. Alright. Ladies and gentlemen, we are live.
Alright, thanks Vic. Alright, good evening, everybody. So we're just gonna, this is our first financial committee meeting in a couple of months. We've got a new board member, Adrian McGinnis. She is now the Secretary Treasurer. Congratulations, Adrian. I'm passing the torch on to you, so as everyone is aware, that's, you know, and Dr. Roberts too, she's new to this as well. But we try to, what we do, we try to, each month before the board meeting on Tuesday, on the second Tuesday of each month, we go a little deeper dive into the financials, just ask Bonnie and and the CEO and Dr. Roberts, just general questions about the finances. How are we, how are we trending to the budget? Any, any specific callouts for the previous month and then the month that is coming in? How we're looking, and we can just really just have a more in-depth conversation about the financials, hoping that we have a little better understanding for the, for the board meetings each month. So, that being said, we're gonna go do a call to order real quick, so Nate Fries.
Adrian McGinnis.
Debbie Zupan.
Allison Roberts.
Bonnie Callen.
And Ms. Bonnie, alright. So, really don't need to establish a quorum here, because this is not an official meeting, this is more just a a committee meeting, so we've got, we've got the roll call done, so we'll go ahead and review, I guess, the July financials. Typically, Adrian, how it's been, is we've just kind of, we've got with Connie, just give her the the ability to give us the rundown of her thoughts on the month. This being the first month is gonna be kind of an, I would, I would say, an outlier of a month, as far as expenditures and revenue and things like that, but typically, we just say, you know, Bonnie, give us the, the quick and dirty of how we're looking from your perspective, and then we go into just individual questions or review of different, certain line items, or certain, certain funds and things like that, so Bonnie, if you wouldn't mind, if you could just take it away.
Take it away.
How'd we do for the first month?
Okay.
For this next month?
Alright, well, it looks good, and as soon as I sent this information out and got ready to leave on vacation, they did give us some updated figures on some of the funds, so next month I will have the actual figures in, the allotments. You know, you're kind of guessing up until September sometimes, on how much money you're actually gonna receive. I don't think, just glancing over, I didn't see a lot of variances over, I just kind of went by what we had last year. And I didn't see a lot of big changes. Everything so far is looking good, of course, we won't have a budget set or voted on until our September meeting, but.
Bonnie, sorry, go ahead.
No, I wasn't gonna say anything, and I haven't looked at this in about a week, because I've been on vacation, so.
You know, for all the reasons Nate already stated, this is the beginning of the year. We're new, we don't even have a budget set yet. I didn't see anything glaring in any of this paperwork that I have specific questions about, but I was wondering if we could take a few minutes, I do have general questions, process questions, kind of, what direction are we heading questions, so I don't wanna like, completely run you over with questions, but I do have a lot that I think we can knock out pretty quickly, and it's just more about, I'm brand new, and I don't know how the school works, and then I'd also like to hear, I'd like to hear from you and Debbie and Dr. Roberts about how you want this to look? If you are seeing inefficiencies or anything like that, if there's a way, like, you know, if there's a way to better do this, I'm not set on what you're giving us. The first question I had was, and does Abscan still produce a board report? What's called the board report?
Yes, and it's in, it's in here.
Okay, so.
Well, it was in the board packet, I don't know Debbie if it was in the finance.
The finance.
It says the changes in fund balances, what?
The, the finance committee got the, they get the full package, and then.
So I don't see one that says board report, is it called something different?
It's called changes in fund balances, I think.
Ah, got it. Okay, so Bonnie, can you catch me up on, this is for period one of twenty-two?
Let me find that in my stuff.
It's after your operating expenses.
Well, I think what I'm looking at is the board packet, so it may or may not be the same.
The only thing the board gets, Bonnie, is the summary, we don't give them the full report.
Oh, you don't?
No. So, what I'm looking at now says Arkansas Arts Academy Detailed Statement of Changes in Fund Balance, that's what they've gone to instead of the board rep, instead of the report called Board Report? Is that right?
This is the only one that I've used since March of two thousand twenty, so Debbie, is it different?
Um, yeah, that's total, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to see, so really, when we're, when we're when we're approving the financials at the board meeting, what we're approving
is all this other stuff you're saying.
Detailed statement in fund balances, great.
Well, and all those other, yes, I guess, but all.
Yeah, cuz these are, the other ones are summaries, right? Um, and this is what comes directly out of Abscan, okay, can you, can you now explain to me what it means for period one of twenty-two?
Period one, well, this is school year twenty-one, twenty-two.
I see, that's the fiscal year, okay. So I was thinking, there's only thirteen periods, how did we move from thirteen to twenty-two? Okay, I got it.
This is period one, which is July, June will be period twelve.
Yes, and then there's an open period.
We are, we still have period thirteen over, be, uh, open, because we're gonna have to do a journal entry for commodities, for food services.
Sure, sure, okay, it was the, I wasn't picking up that that was the fiscal year, and I was just lost, okay.
You ought to be in Abscan, have you worked in Abscan any? Like, you run some reports in Abscan, like, some retirement reports and stuff? And they don't want to go by that, they're wanting to know calendar, so it gets really fun.
Yes, it's, uh, Abscan's super fun, and poor Nate started reading the Abscan manual, the one that was.
I know, I know, and I think he should break it down for all of us.
It was fantastic.
Riveting, wasn't it?
I'm telling you, I read it three times now, it was great.
Okay, a lot of the questions that I marked, I think, need to be bumped for when we talk about budget, so, um, Dr. Roberts, are you working on the personnel budget? You alluded to that, I think, at the last meeting, but.
So, yeah, so just as an update, and I mentioned this to Nate the last time we talked, so Bonnie and I and Terry are gonna sit down and and as soon as possible, we get that schedule, sit down and look at the whole budget salary and look at how we can roll that salary equalization fund, and then how we cross-reference to make sure that we do it in a way that's sustainable and smart, and then also, if we can extend that into the any classified, so right now, it's just fulfilling those certified teachers, so we want to do, we have the funds, we wanna do it, but we wanna do it wisely, and make sure we spread that money out as far as we can go. So anyway, Nate suggested, or Nate, I invited him to come, and you are more than welcome to come as well, whenever we schedule that, if you wanna sit and sort of let us, as we go through.
Okay, and does Terry do the, I haven't seen our contracts. I haven't seen our faculty, I haven't seen any of our contracts, but do our faculty, our faculty contracts specifically call out their salary for the year? Do we?
Those were posted, Vic, Vic knows about this, these were posted.
They're online somewhere.
Uh, yes.
Well, I, I got online and printed all this stuff out, so it's probably in my binder somewhere, and I just haven't looked at it, so if they're out there, I can find it.
I haven't seen them myself in that format, but Vic and Terry work on doing it online.
But somebody is going through, and the reason I'm asking this is not because of Bonnie or Terry, or it it's because we haven't had a stable CEO in place. Is somebody going through and has checked those contracts against our salary schedules for the year?
Terry not do that, Terry not do that.
Okay, but it just seems a little backwards to me that we are you know, approving as a board new, um, positions without a personnel budget in place, and, you know, so we'll get it, um, as the years go by, we'll, we'll move our dates and be a little better about that, but I just wanted to confirm in a finance committee that that had been done already and, and you know, given to Dr. Roberts, so that she can.
Uh, Dr. Roberts, I'm not sure.
Deal with that.
Contracts yet.
Um, I've seen, I have not seen the, the checks and balances, I have seen the list of employees, I've seen their pay rate. I acknowledge the fact that there's a lot of discrepancy, but we are, again, when we meet and we have that overall meeting, we will address some of those issues as well. And I think we'll, we'll be really ready to sort of get all that in line, and we'll develop sort of a stronger process.
Right, and, and so Adrian, also, you know, the contracts were handed out in May.
Yes.
So you have to, you, you're obviously making contracts for the upcoming year, for which you don't really have a set budget.
And you still have openings and stuff, so do we have the ability, you know, if in this review, Dr. Roberts, you find there are inequities or things that need to be changed, we can change those, right? Correct, we don't have to wait a whole nother year until their next contract.
Well, we will look at that and make decisions on how the best approach to do that, if it is this year, or we do it at the very end of the year. But we just wanna make sure we're very strategic in how that, what that looks like. We are not proposing any new hires out of our operating budget. We are moving a couple of positions to be asset funded, which will alleviate some of that pressure we've got, we've got a very high staffing budget right now that we've got to work on minimizing, so we're gonna address some of that through some asset funding with some employees, but I've advised both principals that we are not in the position to make any, any, any changes to what we have right now, without, until we look at this further.
Okay, um, Bonnie, another place I need you to explain to me. We've kind of, over the years, been notorious for having attendance issues. And does this affect our finances in any way? So I know that when Debbie does a lot of the reporting, Debbie, what is it, the reported, the
Enrollment report?
Cycle reporting, sorry, when you do the cycle reporting, or even child nutrition, we're reporting like average daily attendance?
Yes.
So, is that in any way negatively affecting our finances?
It doesn't impact child nutrition. I, I under, I don't understand this component, that it does affect, you, so I know some schools have to pay money back at the end of the year if their attendance isn't a certain percentage.
So, Bonnie, has that ever been a problem for us?
So the funding itself is based on prior year ADM, average daily membership, not attendance. And then you're, and then some of your funding, like student growth, part of it will be based on your membership, not necessarily your attendance.
Okay.
So, are we talking about the same thing and just calling it attendance?
No, we're not, no, 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 I, no, I understand, no, I just, no, I wanted to specifically know, which, I know that Dr. Roberts has already got things in the works for that, but I just wanted to specifically know if our attendance issues are affecting our finances. We know it affects a lot of other things, but that's not for this committee, um, but I just wanted to know if it, if those numbers affected our finances.
I'm not aware of anything.
No, it doesn't affect a child nutrition.
What are our ELL numbers?
Say that again.
Our, our ELL.
Students are.
ELL numbers, they, they're about a hundred and twenty from the last, that was when I pulled it in May, I haven't pulled it this, this month.
Okay. Um, Dr. Roberts, I have more questions about that, but I think that can be a conversation between the two of us. Um, Debbie, the next one's for you, are I may not understand, well, and Bonnie, I may not understand NSLA funding enough, um, that is based on
free and reduced.
Free and reduced lunches.
Right.
So either they, they qualify automatically through your SNAP portal.
Correct.
Or they've turned in the apps, so how is that financial piece gonna be affected this year, since everybody qualifies for free and reduced lunch?
It impacted us last year, we dropped from twenty-seven to about twenty-two percent. Um, I, we have been working in this, at the school level, uh, by giving every student a free and reduced application, and I received about fifty of them today, uh, so I'll be processing those. All of the students that qualified last year for free and reduced or through SNAP will continue this year, and they will, so any that we add to that will increase our percentage. We also have free and reduced for foster children and homeless, and, um, I think that's it.
Do we know how many of our kids qualify for McKinney-Vento funding?
McKinney-Vento is, um, last year I had about twenty-five. But they've really, uh, um, have tightened the ability to qualify. It used to be.
I saw that.
Yeah, if you were doubled up within, within a family, um, if only if there weren't enough bedrooms or such, are we able to classify it as homeless.
Yeah, I saw those changes, I was a little disappointed.
And that did impact us.
Yeah, okay, um, Dr. Roberts.
The previous year, because of the tornado, we had more homeless, because several homes were damaged, but this year, uh, this year, we, I don't expect that, unless another storm rolls through.
Yeah, okay, so, um, Dr. Roberts, we've talked about before, there's a, there's a plan at the school level, right, like Rachel is making sure these forms are getting in everyone's hands, and I think she said something about doing a contest or something.
Yes.
I'll double check, but I will say that with the registrar moving over to the admin office, this is gonna really cinch up a lot of these loose ends, because those forms will be here in our hands, um, and then Debbie and then Terry and, and Beth will all have that information in one location, so. Um, but I will make sure that we're getting those forms back, and, um, I haven't heard about the incentivations, but I'll find out.
It's, uh, it was at the high school, they were gonna do a contest between, um, what is that, their class, it's not homeroom, it's, um, shoot, I can't think of the name, but.
It's their advisory.
Yes, that's it, advisory, they were gonna do a contest between advisory about how many people returned applications.
Uh, we use a private auditor?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, okay, is that just because we don't like legislative audit, or what, what was the reasoning?
I understand now, my first experience with, with charter schools began right before COVID hit, okay? But my understanding is that every charter school typically does, in the state, uses private auditors. They are, you know, it costs us over twenty thousand dollars.
That's the only reason I was asking, is, are, you know, legislative audit is free, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, and that had been my experience only with, uh, state auditors for twenty-nine years, so, yeah.
Um, okay. Can I impact that for just a second, like, explain to my brain real quick, what's the difference between, I, I, I think I understand the difference, but why would we choose, what was the, what would be the benefits of going to a private auditor versus something that's provided already? None?
I, I don't know, I really don't know, um.
I didn't take.
Just, just going through the audit in, whenever that was, Debbie, was it January, February, or before Christmas, I can't even remember now. It was.
They started it before Christmas, but they didn't finish it till the end of March or something.
It's, it's a lot, um.
It's a lot of work on Bonnie, for sure.
Well, it is different, it's just, um, you know, the auditor that I had for so many years, for like nineteen straight years, we had a love-hate relationship, half the time I'd cry, or he'd cry, I won't. Yeah, and, um, they are just, um, they seem to ask more questions, and, and just the one-year experience I've had with arts, um, the division of legislative audit seems to be more, I don't know if I wanna say thorough, but they seem to require more paperwork information from me.
Dr. Roberts, I, I would, I would ask that you, you know, kind of consider that, is it, is it truly necessary to spend? I mean, is there a better use of that money? I get also that it, it does have to do with definitely Bonnie's time, Terry's time, Debbie's time, your time, you'll have to spend time with them as well. And, so I, I do get that, that, and if there's no real reason why we aren't just using legislative audit, I would say.
Like, I'm not even aware that legislative audit even, um, I guess they're available, but I'm not aware of any charter schools that they.
Uh, we used them at the charter school that I was at, but, um, again, let's, let's not use that one as a good example here. Um.
Yeah, let me, let me reach out.
Let's check into it and just see, there may be reasons, um, you know, Ken may say, hey, there's a, you know, there's a good reason for this, and that's fine, um, but if nobody really has a good reason, and we have twenty thousand dollars that we can put somewhere else, let's do that.
I agree, and, um, with that, now, we hope to have their verification from Ken and Scott, when they can come and do the board training, and some of these questions are great to field to them, but I will reach out, uh, and find out why that decision was made, and I'll get back with you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, you know, a lot of the, a lot of this other questions that I have marked as, um, budget, but, um, let's see. Um, on the summary for Fund Eight, um, does this fund include, like, do we get reimbursements for the summer lunch program?
We do, uh, we were late in, um, processing our June claim, because we didn't have a CEO, but.
To sign off, yes.
To sign on, so that has been done, um, and it will be processed, we should get our reimbursement, um, by the end of this week, early next week, and.
I wasn't worried about the numbers, I just wondered if we were gonna get money from the summer too.
Absolutely, yes.
Um.
We've got our, our July, I mean, our June reimbursement was twenty-eight thousand dollars, so we'll be getting.
Oh, yeah, that's significant, okay.
And then July will be pretty comparable.
Okay, um, in our packet, there was a duplicate printout of a fund date summary, which, which is fine, which leaves us with a summary for six, seven, and eight. Did you want us to have another one? I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing one. Was there another summary you wanted us to have?
That's all I had, what, Bonnie, was there another one?
I'm, okay, when we're talking about summary, you're gonna have to tell me which report I'm looking at.
It looks like this.
Like, hold it still.
It's right before the Abscan reports.
Yeah, I found it, I found it. I think. I don't know why two of them printed off, I do know that on some of these, I had trouble getting them, like, like I'm looking at one that's so tiny, I can't read it.
Okay.
I don't know if y'all got a small one like that.
Um, on these summary pages, it says budget to actual federal fund six, uh, let's see, activity fund seven and food service fund eight, and I think we do wanna see budget to actuals, but I would like to hear from Nate and Dr. Roberts about is this the format that we're wanting to talk through? Um, is this what we're wanting to see? And I don't know. I don't know that I would need to see a summary on, um, Fund Eight, just because you have it somewhere else, sorry. Well, so it's on, that's on our detailed statement of fund balances, fund A, I'm not sure that we need a some, an additional summary on that one. And that's really gonna be more of a timing thing, that Debbie can explain to us, like, if something's behind, or if there happens to be a negative there, which, you know, that would be a rare occurrence, it would be Debbie saying, oh, well, we haven't gotten the payment for this month yet, or whatever, so I'm not sure that, um, I just wanna cut down on some of the time, Bonnie, you're having to spend on putting all this together for us? Cuz I think that there are some other things that we would like to look at, and.
So I will say, these reports were already in place. These were what had been being used for, I don't know how long, Debbie, but these are just the same reports, so I haven't changed anything, because that, you know, we kind of talked about, did you wanna see something indifferent for me, and then we did add some different reports that they weren't getting, but.
I don't wanna take, I won't take a lot of your time tonight, there's, I'll send an email out, there's a couple of things that I would like to see differently, and then I would also like to hear from you, Bonnie, like, hey, this is really easy to print out and get to you, or this is gonna take me an extra four hours, uh, we don't wanna do that at all.
So, you know, the board, what you referred to is the board report, the changes in fund balances, that, if you, that's the simplest thing.
Okay, um, that, that is.
Because that comes directly out of Abscan, the rest of it, I have to type in, or somebody's gonna type in the figures into all these other tabs to be compared, but that's, but that.
Yeah, off the top of my head, and I don't think we need to see fund date broken out, but I do think it would be helpful to see Fund Six broken out, once we get a couple of months in, especially when we're talking about those budget to actual numbers. Um, the way it's set up now, this printout for Fund Six doesn't really do us any good, I don't think. Um, I think it's just would be taking too much of your time, and because it doesn't really give us any detail as to where the issues might be, right? Or anything to talk about, so I would say.
You know, there's also the expenditure status reports, have you seen those? I mean, those can be broken down.
I, is it okay if I take a little more time to kind of look at these reports and see, because, um, really, definitely, this change in fund balance that you can just print out is really most of what we need, I think we do need to have some sort of setup for budget to actuals. This summary page that, um.
The expenditure says, would show budget. The expenditure says.
Okay.
Show budget.
Once we have it in, okay, yeah, Bonnie, I don't know that there's a lot of need for you to be doing a lot of this extra time-consuming things, um, this projection page, is this something that the charter office requires of you?
I, all I know is one of the reports that we.
You were just given, you were just said, you just were told to do this, okay, that, um, Dr. Roberts, I'm not sure, Nate, I'm not sure that this is telling us anything at all, and this is uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Bonnie, this is actually pretty time consuming, because this is a summary sheet, and there are a bunch of workbooks behind this, is that correct? Yeah, so, and that she has to put information into every time, and so there's a lot more detail behind this, and, and I'm just not sure that it's worth your time. Uh, I'm not going to use this as a summary sheet, this gives me no information other than if we were a school that was in serious trouble, and we were projecting out a negative, and we were having to closely watch, um, each period to make sure that that negative at the end was disappearing, this would be helpful, this doesn't tell us anything, so I don't, I don't think you need to waste your time on this one anymore. Nate, so you have any need to see this? This just gives you beginning balance, revenue, expenditures, and ending balance. Beginning balance, revenue expenditures, and ending balance.
Um, Adrian, if you'll look, also, this is something else that had been being done. Uh, if you'll look, I believe, do we have expenditure status reports? Nate, you know, the ones that I used to highlight, and then I finally got tired of it, and I quit highlighting the fund for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because I didn't have time, for one thing, um, that's an expenditure, expenditure status report. Adrian, I don't know, that would have been in.
I think it's page four.
Oh, I have, I found it, here's a revenue status.
It's run, it's run by account, but that can be run.
No, no, I like it like this, because I'm gonna ask you for detail, and this is already here.
Okay.
Okay, so I. Uh, give me a little more time to look.
Really, that's really all I wanted to see was this breakout where I can, for me, I just wanted to understand for the year. Where did, where were we projected, what was the budget, and where did we land for that month? And I think if we're talking about the same form, let me just share my screen real quick. If this is what we're talking about. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Expenditure, like this is.
I, I liked that one, but I think that.
This what you're talking about? I don't know how much work that, yeah, I, thi- this is really like.
Let me tell you, some of that is just guesstimation, you know, I don't.
Yeah, timing, right, I mean, it.
I think you, Adrian, if I'm, this is the one you were talking about, right, or this is just gives us, here's our beginning balance, here's the revenue expense, and here's where we're ending. Yeah, I think to your point, it's nice to see if we're gonna be in trouble towards the end of the year, where we're gonna end the balance at the end of the year. Um, but not if that's took, taken a ton of work, but what, what form were you talking about, Bonnie, that? Or, or even Adrian, what were you guys talking about, was this?
It's an ab scan report.
Does the ab scan report.
These down here.
Keep go, oh, yeah, okay, so this is what I have been calling the board report. So this right here is um, used to, it said at the top, board report, but this.
I know, and it goes, we are. Everybody calls it.
This is what we're approving, like, when we approve, when you and I go back and say, yeah, we've reviewed the July financials. And we can approve them, and they ask questions, and then this is what we're approving. None of the rest of this is what we're approving, because this is all stuff that Bonnie's giving us so that we can ask questions and make decisions about budgeting and stuff. But this is right out of ab scan and what we're approving, but if you keep going down, you'll find what she's talking about. No, not that, oh, can we stop there for a second, since he's got it pulled up?
Reconciliation report.
Doctor Roberts, do you, or will you be signing off on the bank reconciliation and the?
Bank statement.
Yeah, and the bank statement, will you be signing off on that?
Yes, um, in collaboration with Bonnie and I talking through it, and probably would be a good idea, Adrian, with you on the board. So you are aware, uh, and we keep, you know, conversation about that, but yes. Um, and I really like the way you're thinking as far as what's useful and it's not, because there's absolutely no need for Bonnie to do. Extra work if it's not, not useful, and if you.
Guys, I don't mind doing it, if that's what you.
Oh, wait, oh, just wait, Bonnie, I'll, I'll send you a list. It's not gonna be these.
You're not gonna supplant, you're gonna supplement.
Yeah, so if you think about Adrian, if you think about this, this role and this, this meeting as a way to really ask all those questions. So then we go into a regular board meeting.
It's done.
You have a better understanding, and you can kind of give an overview. So um, it's important that you have what you need to sort of um, interpret where things are at.
But Nate, as my opinion, but Nate, as finance committee members. I think it kind of is our due diligence to review this bank reconciliation report. And to look through the bank statement and kind of sign off on it. I don't. Yeah, right, because we don't want this to say like ACH to Bonnie, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I hear you.
But I don't know, really, there's not, other than just sending it to us, there's not really.
I think. From, to back up real quick. About what I would like to see, now, it doesn't, doesn't mean it has to be this way. But what I don't see on this is what was the budget supposed to be?
Yeah.
So for example, if I'm like, okay, in, in this fund for, for, I don't know, just an example, uh, for, that's a bad example.
No, Nate, it's okay, it's in your other.
Whatever it may be.
If you go to the expenditure status report. The expenditure and revenue status reports, keep on going, there are reports a lot.
I'mma keep her rolling here, okay?
Keep going. There it is, no, go back up, yeah, these are your expenditures, the other one is your revenue.
Okay.
When we approve a budget, there will be a number there, and I think that.
Okay.
What you're talking about being so much more useful than projected.
Yes, if I know like, for, for legal, we have a budget of two thousand dollars and we spent five thousand, I want to be able to pick that out and go, what happened?
Yes.
And so to me, that's what the summary did, but if that's what this is, I'm perfect with that, as long as I can.
Actually more detail.
So, so some of these reports are, yeah, what I'm actually doing is looking at some of these reports and having to hand type in.
Don't do that, Bonnie.
Which, like I said, again, I don't mind if that's what you guys.
Oh, if we, I think we, the only thing I wanted to see, and, and that's just because of how my brain works, I just want to see how are we doing the budget? And, and that's it, so this is, if this provides that, there is no need for anything else, in my opinion, for, for what I want.
So, and you'll see a lot of things.
Right, you'll want more stuff and different things that.
No, I, no, I don't want all of this. Uh, this, the, the board report, I'm gonna get the right name, whatever.
Changes in fund balances, but it is.
Fun balance, the fund balances, and then these um, status reports for revenue and expenditures, and. This other stuff, I don't think you need to waste your time on, I get it that we need to review and sign off on the reconciliations. And bank statement, also, you know, I think. I'm definitely gonna look through all of them, Nate's definitely gonna look through all of them, but really, we're gonna rely on Doctor Roberts to say, like, yeah. You know. Cause we have some parents and teachers showing up on here, I don't know, we're, you know, we're probably, they're all legitimate expenses, but I don't know what we're paying them for, so. Um, I think once she signs off on that, it'll be easier for us to sign off on that too, so.
And to be honest, I need to go through with all of these individuals and look at the expenditures. Because I think we're overpaying in some areas that we don't need to, and so just, just to follow back up. Um, I've been texting with Ken, so as far as the private versus um, state audit. It's varied within charters, um, and it's also varied within public school, within regular school districts. Some of the bigger districts use private just because it's faster, the state, the state process takes longer. And is a little bit more, um, just like Bonnie said, a little bit more detail oriented. Um, so it's up to us, I just told Ken that we might want to renegotiate with the private company we're using. And see if we can find a better price, and if it wasn't speedy enough, like Ken said, they usually take about a week, or, you know. Just really quickly, if it wasn't speedy enough, we need to look at enough other contracts, but if we choose as a charter to change. The private to state, we would have to go back in and readjust our charter, our whole charter.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's something we definitely need to consider, yeah.
So what, what I can, we, what we can do is begin looking at some other private companies that will go back in and, and do this, and um.
Well, I know Nate and I have several questions regarding budget when it comes to some of the stuff we're paying for in the contracts we have. But that can be another day, and also, I feel like, and Nate, correct me if I'm wrong. We just need to give Doctor Roberts a little more time to get her feet under her and.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah, and I mean, one of my first steps is honestly, and Debbie and I can do this too, is go through it. Who is the point of contact for all these different services, and then I can start narrowing it down that way. But we can also discuss this with Ken when the, we do the board training.
Okay, um, the last question I have, believe it or not, last question, is not a question, it's a doozy. Um, it is on this fund seven. Summary. How do we want to start looking at and reviewing fund seven? So this is clubs, departments, classes, grades, athletics. Chromebooks, I think that's the Chromebook insurance, but I still have a question about why we put it in fund seven. Who manages these budgets, who approves them, what, what is going on with fund seven? So, um, any, anybody, like, what do we, where do we even start with fund seven?
Well, I'll jump in some of that, so um, sports, you guys are gonna discuss tomorrow with the sports policy. Some of that funding is gonna be part of what's required as you think about approving a sport. Um, I don't, I think it appears to be fund seven's been a catchall. Um, and there's a lot of fees and things I'm trying to wrap my head around why they exist. Um, our Chromebook purchases just recently have run through our S R funds, which is exactly what that's designed for. Um, so that's a whole lot of, I'm not sure either, but we need to clean that up.
I understand that, um.
I can tell you on that one, on the Chromebook budget line item in fund seven, you're right, that would have been.
The insurance?
That was, yeah, the insurance fees we collect from parents.
I, you know, unless Bonnie tells me it has to go somewhere else, I would sure rather that be under Vic's tech budget. And out of fund seven, but we currently have ten full pages of. Seven thousand coding, just fine, I, I get, I get that they have, you know, that we have a lot of programs. And that sort of thing, but um. Since we have money sitting in a good number of these accounts. Does that mean we own that money, we are responsible for that money, that money is the school.
We are, but you also have to realize that student generated money, and that's why it's set apart in an activity fund.
Okay.
Apart from regular operating. You, and Vic has access to that Chromebook fund, and I think Vic, maybe you and I kind of talked about when we're gonna do repairs or, or parts. And this was kind of pre S R, now S was kind of thrown at, you know, now we have the estimate to spend for technology and for learning loss. And for things like that, but.
But that's there because the students pay it, or the parents pay it for, okay.
We used, I know in the past years, we have used that fund to pay for insurance policies that we. Well, no, e- even insurance policies that we would purchase on the Chromebooks, you know, so accidental damage policies, that type of thing. Um, and I think we still need to do some of that, because we have some Chromebooks that we have out there that have expired insurance. That I need to cover, so I was kind of, I want to kind of keep an eye on that one.
And you know, we, we can pay for new Chromebooks out of that money, but like, again, like I said, now we have S R. You know, that we're, we need to expend also for those.
Yeah, which we did, we did.
I don't want to necessarily, you know, get super in the weeds here, but when we're talking about fund seven. I would like to see like, um, do we have policies and procedures in place? For kind of managing this mess, um.
Most of these are going to be overseen by a principal, okay? Uh, Vic would oversee the Chromebooks, these other things are, uh, like your arts. Things, your dance, your cro- uh, your, um. Oh, I'm just like yearbook and things like that, that's where you're gonna pay for your yearbooks, the kids are gonna pay for their yearbooks, and then we're gonna pay Walsworth or whoever it is. Justin's, I can't remember.
Yeah, okay, I'm following it.
So, and Adrian, like, let's just look at dance performance for a second, cause you know, some of these like forty one dollars. You're probably gonna have a pizza party maybe, but let's look at dance performance, it has eighty five hundred dollars. Tell me what, tell me what that is.
Well, and it could be, some of those are, a- and I'm guessing, because I don't know one hundred percent. But sometimes teachers will get a certain allocation to uh, reserve a dance space. Uh, reserve a facility, um, it could be they rolled over these funds and their honor society is collecting them to use for a special purpose. And that's to buy their graduation cords or their.
So that was gonna be my next question, do we have policies or procedures in place where, you know, eighty five hundred dollar? I don't know, I, I, because I've just started, I don't know, you know, is seven thousand dollars for a digital class a lot, has it been rolled over? So my con- my only concern here with the funds, not only, one of my concerns with the fund seven is. We don't want to hold money that doesn't belong to us, so at the end of the year. If, you know, if it's a, if it's a line that's kind of a use it or lose it, what happens to that money? Space camp, is that?
This carries over.
That carries over, yeah.
It is, everything that starts with the seven, fund seven.
We do carry it all over.
It carries over, it's not based on strictly.
If you have somebody.
Budgeted, this money carries over from year to year, and Adrian, a lot of these funds, you know, already have, have had balances in them for years.
Well, and COVID, I mean, you're not gonna have taken your trips and done your activities under that.
Yeah, some of these are, some of these are fees, the student paid the fees, it could also be gate ticket, so that dance performance could be gate ticket. Entry, and they're using that to fund other things, so they're pulling, currently right now, no departments. Um, have a quote budget, which that's, there's good and bad to that, um, but these, these are in this same. Fund, so they don't get um, absorbed by the general budget.
Exactly, you can't put it in fund two thousand or twenty two hundred for you guys, because it would get lost, you have to have a way to keep it separated.
Yes.
I think one of the questions I had with that.
Do what?
Go ahead, Bonnie.
What, would ju- so that's why you have fund seven thousand, to keep it completely separate from your regular operating budget.
I think, if I, if I were to pull up last year, like at the end of this last year, at the fund seven balances, I think. I think I, I hear what Adrian's saying here, I, I, from my perspective, and I know there may not be a budget process for these individual funds. But at the same time, you know, we've, like, for dance performance, looks like we, looks like a lot of that carried over from last year. I think, I think it would be a good idea from the principals, for the principals and the teachers that are leading these, these funds. To make some kind of a plan of how to spend that money, because it is a benefit for the students, and you know, for, for dance performance, for, now, I know last year was. Completely different with COVID.
Right, I'm sure that had a lot to do with.
Yeah, like space camp, I know, we've got, you know, it looks like we got a little extra money in space camp, that's fantastic, I know we did go to space camp, but I really like to see. Um, at least from an overall perspective, how are we, how are we gonna benefit the students? Cause if students are working hard and the teachers are working hard to get this money, I think they need to spend it and not let it go over. So if I'm a senior in high school and I did all this work to raise funds for my high school uh, dance performance, I don't get to do it, kind of a bummer, right? Um, not that, I would like to see like individual, like, okay, why didn't dance do it, or why didn't, but I think it would be good to have a plan. Um, and then maybe the students can hear that too, here, this is what we're gonna do, this is our, our goal for the year, this is what we're gonna raise, and at the end of the year, this is what we're gonna do. Cause I think that'll help, um, I know it would help me anyway, if I was a student going, I at least have a goal at something, and there's something that, you know, that I'm gonna enjoy. After all my hard work, because there's a lot of money um, left over in all these accounts, and some of them have nothing. Um, but there's some big numbers here, and I think like student council, twenty five hundred dollars, you know. Could we have gotten something for the kids, you know, they wanted a vending machine, or, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, right? Like, could we, what are things we could do that'll help the students, what are, what, that's supposed to benefit them, uh, versus carrying it over, right?
Nate, I think a lot of, I'm sorry, Doctor Roberts.
We can, we can work on getting some conversations, I, I'm having a meeting with all the department chairs for the high school. This could be something I discuss with them, so they can talk about how they want to do it. Also, keep in mind though, that some of these clubs might be saving for a particular thing, which is fine. We just, just probably would like to have an idea of what that looks like, so I'll work on getting some clarity.
And then sometimes, sometimes you have a sponsor, someone leaves, someone else takes over, they're taking over a balance, it's someone. They're taking over a balance that someone else had some intention for that they're not aware of, you know.
Well, that's a little bit like why I was asking, do we have kind of some general policies and procedures for how we use activity funds or also how we don't want you to use activity funds? And even, even some thresholds, right? If, if you're wanting to do X dollar amount, you need to get your principal to sign off. If you want to do X dollar amount, you need Dr. Roberts to sign off. Just something where, you know, I'm not, this is just an example, right? The, the dance teacher doesn't go out tomorrow and decide that she wants to spend seventy-five hundred dollars on this because she thinks it's what benefits the kids. She may be right, but like, something in place, you know, you're, you're spending fifty bucks on pizza. I don't know that that needs to be run by Dr. Roberts, but, um, I do feel like what we need to put a few things in place.
There should be, there should be stopgaps with the principal, and I'll just make sure that they exist. If they don't, we'll create them.
Yeah, let's get them in writing just so that we don't have to deal with trouble from that later.
Just think of all those kids running for school president that, that promise a Coke machine. Let's get them a Coke machine. You know, like that, that's what it's for, right? So, um, yeah, I think that's great. I think just a little, little extra oversight, doesn't mean it need to be much, but just understand what, what, what's the plan and how do we do it? And I think that would be great.
I want to say something though, in defense of this beginning balance for July, for July one, which was also the ending balance for June thirtieth. When I first started, we had several activity counts that were running in the negative. You know, they were overspending.
Okay, we definitely, we definitely need some real advice about that.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's great to have money, but I, I also know that, and I know everyone feels this way. If, this is the kind of money that is, is raised to spend, and I think we're missing, in my opinion, we're missing the boat on things that will benefit the kids. Let's get it as close to zero as we can without going over that. Um, but again, you know, Dr. Roberts, to your point, if there's a big plan for a scene, you know, the, the, the seventh graders this year are planning a big senior trip, yeah, absolutely, let's keep that going, right? But I think just you understanding that and being able to speak to that and then encouraging the principals and the teachers, like, look, this is there for the kids. Let's, let's use it where it makes sense and where it benefits the students and the learning for all of them. So I think this is a great, I, we haven't had this, this detailed conversation in this fund yet, and I thank you for that.
Um, Bonnie, that's a really good point, and I would really like to see Dr. Roberts something written where we are really clear that you are not to send into the negative unless you have cleared it with Dr. Roberts first, ahead of time. This is not do it and ask for forgiveness later. And because I, yes, it was, I didn't.
It hasn't, I, the principals have done a great job this year with their funds and not overspending. And also as requisitions are approved and converted to purchase orders, I, I look at the coding and make sure there's funding in there. And if I see something like, for instance, a dance or cheer or something that is in the negative, they will say, well, we've got money coming in, and a lot of parents pay for things online, like camps and things like that, on that My Payments Plus that we use for food service.
I definitely understand the timing, but I still want, and I, you know, there would be multiple reasons why we would run multiple of these accounts into the negative, but
like I said, some of these.
Not without Dr. Roberts knowing. That's gotta be, that's gotta be written somewhere.
So some of these, these, these balances may be the same that have been there for years. I have seen in other schools, you know, they will need a fund for one year. Like one teacher decides he wants to take up money or sell projects or something that the students might, maybe in agri or something. And for one year, there'll be this account, and then like no one else ever uses it, and the money will just carry over forever.
Well, Bonnie, in all your spare time.
We're giving her lots of time today.
Why don't you let us know which, or let Dr. Roberts know which ones those are? Because that is, that to Nate's point, that's an issue that we need to not just keep.
Right, and your principals may know, like I'm looking at seven thousand three postcard sales. Debbie, I don't know what that is, or you.
That's, Mary Lay did those paintings and turned them into postcards. You may see, you may have seen them in the district officer in the high school office, and then they sold the packets. I don't even know if we have any left to sell. And what did that, what was that money used for, Debbie? The postcard sales.
Probably the supplies to do them, I would guess, but.
They, the postcards printing was all donated, and I don't know what the purpose was. I wasn't in the administration office when that was done.
Well, that's Mary Lay project, Dr. Roberts.
And then the one above that, the two above that, seven thousand one and two, I'm pretty sure those, and there's no money in seven thousand two, but seven thousand one, I haven't, I don't remember.
That's when they had that Lego, um, robotics team. And I know they're kicking it around back and forth, but you have to have a really committed, knowledgeable coach to do that. So again, that's a, that's a Mad Doctor Roberts question.
When we look at these seven thousand funds, we need to keep in mind, what you see as ending balance is actual cash money. It's not a budget balance.
Yep.
Right, yeah.
You can't just, just wipe this out, you know, we'll have to do a journal inquiry if there's another fund we can.
Can we reallocate these? Like, for example, I'm just, I'm guessing here, um, let's say this lunch sponsored meals, I don't know what that is. Let's just say that it wasn't needed. Could we reallocate that to like library?
I, on that.
Like one seven thousand.
Parents gave us to use to pay off net, uh, accounts that were in the negative.
That may be. I was wondering where that money went, because I knew we had several.
That was just an example. If there's, if there's, if there's a fund that we don't really have that, or if we don't have, if, if there was more than thirty dollars in the Lego fund, for example, and we have no intention of using that, could we reallocate within the seven thousand, the seven funds in order to like, hey, you know what, it'd be great that the elementary school could get some more books?
Yeah, I'm wondering how that money was made, Adrian, do you know?
It depends, Nate, it's a good question. It depends on how it was raised and who donated it. Because if it was donated by a parent or the club raised it for a certain thing, we can't move it. But what I'm going to do to clean this up is let me identify who owns these categories. And then let us try to, um, clean it up a little bit and find out what's happening with some of these categories and why they're there, and also in relationship to the clubs too. We just, I just need to put an owner to these, the categories and find out what's happening.
I think that's a great, you know, Adrian, we were talking last meeting, um, about having some committees, having the finance committee, having the education committee, you know, all that. I think that would be good for anyone who leads a fund or a group of funds could be, could be able to speak to that during those, whatever those meetings are, as far as the, the finance goes. I don't know, just throwing it out there, but yeah, that's, that'd be great, just some kind of oversight to understand and have some accountability and really just to, to put that money where it's designed to go versus, I don't know what the total transfer over was. Is there like a balance, like a total?
A little over a hundred thousand.
Beginning balance in all the funds is a hundred twenty-seven thousand.
So there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars theoretically.
And all those combined funds.
Didn't go to what, no, with the issue, you know, obviously, maybe there's bigger plans for that, but that's a lot of money. You know, and we could do a lot of cool things with those, with those. So anyway, all right, that's perfect.
And, and just also, I mean, I don't know this either, but some of those funds could be grant funds. The teachers could have written for small grants or whatever. We definitely can't touch that. So we'll, 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 we'll find some answers.
Okay.
And I, this is not hot priority, I, I don't think. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying this needs to be done this week or next week or whatever. I just think, let's put it on the list, all right? Bonnie, I'm not saying fix all this overnight. It's like, let's put this Fund Seven on the list to kind of clean up after, you know, five or six years of random people.
I think after Dr. Roberts gets an idea of who's, who's on first, who's on second, you know, that sort of thing, then that'll kind of give us a path to go down.
And you, Dr. Roberts, there's a lot on the list before this, so.
Rest assured, I will get it cleaned up. You can.
Let's not, this one doesn't need to be moved up, I don't think. I think we just. How many bank accounts do we have? This isn't a pop quiz. I just really.
We have one checking account.
I have a question about checking account for my mind. So I like when money makes money. It's like my favorite thing to do, when my money makes money. Do we have interest-bearing accounts or are we not allowed to have interest-bearing accounts?
Well, if you look at the actual bank statement, I'm there with Arvest, you'll notice we're getting charged at the.
Uh huh.
And I think that's because we didn't used to for a long time, and then all of a sudden we started getting charged at this on that very first page of the actual bank statement.
Where is that?
And they have something that they go by, uh, according to, I don't know why all that's upside down.
Twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, twenty-five dollars, forty-nine cents.
Yeah, exactly. So I look at this balance of one point four, and I'm like, well, even at point zero zero one interest rate, whatever the interest rate is, you would think that we can get, and I just, I wasn't sure if it was just a, it's the kind of account we have, are we able to, because it's a, or tech, are we technically a not for profit?
I think we can ask, I think that's a really good question for Ken.
I mean, a million dollars and, you know, one percent, I mean, that's money, and that's, you know, so I was just, I was just curious as to that, what, as to why, if there was a reason we couldn't. And if there isn't, then can we start looking in that? Because when money makes money, that just makes me smile.
I think Ken will be able to tell us about what we can and can't do with our bank accounts, but one hundred percent, Nate, you and I need to have a conversation with Arvest to stop charging us twenty-five dollars a month.
Well, okay, so, from what I understand. From what I understand with Arvest is that, um, there are certain things that are built into our account, certain services. And at some point in time, when interest rates went down, our services stayed the same. And that is why we started getting charged this service charge, and I don't think I noticed it till about, I mean, we didn't have them for, I don't know, maybe up to five months ago or six months ago.
Bonnie, can you add that to your list and shoot Nate and I notes about?
Yeah, but I can't talk to Arvest about your account.
No, uh, when that started. Could you just shoot us a note about when that started?
And I think it has, somebody has explained this to me multiple times, and there was a service we had, Debbie, remember how they were sending all those canceled check copies or something to you? Okay, that was a service we had that I said, okay, let's drop that. We don't need that. I asked everybody, nobody needed that, nobody requested it. I think you may have had to ask, or maybe I was actually able to talk to somebody at Treasury Management and get them to stop that. And.
Well, here's the deal.
We didn't get a service charge.
The auditor probably are going to want that. Uh, Dr. Roberts, I think when we go to Arvest, there's a conversation to be had there about, but let's talk to Ken first and see what our options are for bank accounts.
I agree.
Good, good point out there, Nate. That's, I mean, that's a huge balance if we can get anything at all.
Something out of it, yeah.
Need to be.
You, you have to leave a certain amount in your bank account, okay? Or you will get these service charges.
No, yeah, I agree. I think, I think leaving, I think having all that is fine, is in, in there is fine. I was, you know, when I just think about, you got almost one and a half million dollars sitting there, and again, the twenty-five dollars is not much, but it's like, why are you charging me when I got one point five million dollars in your, in yours?
We do have, we do have options. So with Arvest, in again, we're going to have to dig in a little farther about what's allowed for charter schools, but, and private schools. Um, you, you can, it's a sweep account, right? So it's, your money sits in a money market, and then you write your checks out of an operating account. And at the end of every day, if you wrote twenty-five thousand dollars in checks, then it sweeps out twenty-five thousand, and your million and a half is still sitting there earning money.
Yep.
Insane thing. If you spend a million dollars, it'll sweep it out and you're earning a lot less. But, um, at the end of the day, you know, you don't touch that sweep account, you don't touch that money market account. Bonnie makes all the deposits into the operating, and same thing, at the end of the day, it sweeps that money over to your money market account. So Arvest has the ability to do that. Uh, we just need to find out from Ken if we're able to do that as a charter school. And if we are, we need to talk to Arvest about what kind of deal are you going to give us? Because we, we have one point five million dollars at your bank, so stop charging us twenty-five dollars a month. That's crazy.
And start giving us, you know, twenty thousand in interest. It'll be great. What, what can we, we can do a lot of stuff, a lot of things with that, right?
Twenty thousand, Nate.
Hey, I don't know. What's the number? Is it, was it one percent now? Is it one percent?
You're not going to kill.
For a money market? I don't know. Let's say it's a half percent. That's seven grand a year.
Bonnie, is your head spinning from all of our questions?
Not yet, but when I go back in the office tomorrow, it may spin. So if you see explosions down around the Johnson exit, that might be my brain.
I'm going to send an email to kind of just recap what we talked about, about the reporting. Um, and then Nate, if you'll just correct me, if you want to see something that I've kind of said next, but, um, really, it's just those ABSCAN reports that I think we need right now, and then we'll talk more about budget to actual once, once we get that done.
Um, I was going to tell y'all, I have seen, and I have had superintendents in the past, like looking at this bank statement. They would go through the bank statement, and they would look at anything like over a certain threshold, maybe fifty thousand, one way or the other, debit or credit. And they would, you know, question what it was if they didn't know, if they already knew what it was, but they would initial over to decide that, yeah, they approved that, they understood that. Like, we're looking at the direct deposit, obviously, that twenty-eight thousand dollars showing on seven eight that was deposited, you know? I mean, that's another option. I don't know how thorough you all want to get with that, but.
Uh, you know, really, that's, if our auditors have not come back and said, and that they want.
I'm telling you, a state auditor might.
A state auditor absolutely will tell you that, um, Dr. Roberts needs to sign off both on the bank reconciliation report and on the, um, bank statement, which you're planning on doing, Dr. Roberts.
The auditor, our, our private auditors also expect that. Debbie, Debbie has a book where she keeps all that.
I do.
Because the, yes, they are signing off on it. Rich signed off on it, yes.
Yes. Debbie, do you need me to come in and sign off on these as well as the Secretary of Treasure?
I've not had, we've not done that in the past, just the CEO.
Okay.
But I, I can bring it to the board meetings and you can, uh, I mean, definitely do that.
But Dr. Roberts sets it up to you. I, I don't know.
And I typically don't have.
I don't feel any need to do that, but.
I don't, you typically have the CEO sign off until the board approves it.
Okay.
But I'm, is that something that we should do before?
Yeah, I would, I would like Dr. Roberts to sign off on the bank statement and the bank reconciliation before this meeting.
Okay.
So that Nate and I can ask any questions that we might have about that, and then there's no need to get this detailed in a board meeting, really. As far as just the bank statement and stuff goes, I don't think. Nate, what do you think?
I don't think so. No, no, I think that, that was sort of the intention, but part one of the intentions of this meeting, Adrian, was to go in and do that, those detailed discussions and questions. Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily go that detail, but I have a quick question. What is bank card service vendor payment?
Debbie, that, uh, those are the My Payments Plus payments that are done, done online. And like this month, we had some Chromebook insurance, Debbie, I think we had some student meals. We had, uh, maybe cheer and dance intensive, possibly.
So that's just a credit card swipe, essentially. Okay, I thought it was a service fee.
No.
Because I saw the service. Paying a service fee? Okay, got it.
No, those are all deposits.
These are all deposits. These are positive amounts. They're deposits, and that ninety dollars on July first could be twenty-five dollars for Chromebook. It could be, you know, seventy dollars for lunches.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
But on eat, but we have, we have receipts that match all of these deposits.
Okay, okay, all right.
Some of that could be school supply fees that we have prepaid and the parents are reimbursing us. That, that's the packet of school supplies the kids get when they show up.
And then I think sometimes your culinary classes maybe sell some things that they pay.
They do.
So it just populates all day. End of the day, we had six hundred and eighty-six dollars worth of payments via bank card.
Instead of a parent writing. Instead of us parent writing a check to us, they're.
Okay. I thought it was a fee for some reason, like for using bank cards. Okay, got it. My bad. Thank you. Adrian, any other questions? This has been a very productive meeting for my brain.
On today.
Okay. Anybody else? Dr. Roberts, anything from you?
No, I appreciate you guys being very thorough. I mean, that helps so much that you're, you're involved with this. And um, your eyes are gonna really help the process, so thank you. I really appreciate it.
Adrian, I'm just glad you're here. Really, I'd like to have your experience in this. It's gonna be really good for us this year. And Bonnie, cause Bonnie, I can't imagine what it was like for this last year, really us not knowing. You got someone that actually speaks your language now, so that's good.
If you'll just let us know as we go along, like, um, hey, this is really taking a lot of time and it shouldn't, or anything like that, we want your feedback, so.
We had prop, you know, we had previously kind of talked about these board reports. Is this what you want to see? You know, and um, you know, sometimes when you get used to something, that's what you want to keep seeing, you know, and so I, I have no issues with it one way or the other.
Well, lucky for you, I'm used to ABSCAN reporting, and I don't need you to take four, you have other things to do. You don't need to take four or five hours every week.
So you know that what I run in ABSCAN, I can't manipulate or change. King in figures, I could transpose something, I could get, you know, some, I see a nine as a seven or a six or whatever, and make a mistake. I try to double check everything so it all matches what I, what I do on those Excel reports, is I'm making sure they are matching what the actual ABSCAN reports that we're talking about say, you know, so.
Debbie, anything for you, ma'am?
Uh, no, I'm just, I said we are down to nine hundred in child nutrition, but that's because we have two reimbursements due us. But we're be, we're in good, we're in really good shape.
This has nothing to do with this meeting, but Debbie and, and Dr. Roberts, I watched a documentary this weekend.
You're scaring me now.
I just, I, this is, this is for the board. Well, we can discuss this later, but I just wanna talk, get a more, a better understanding about the nutrition um, at the school, specifically with breakfast. Um, what can we, what, are we tied to what we're getting, whatever, if we're feeding the kids? Do we have ability to change the menu? Do we have? And then I don't, and again, this isn't one, it's, it's important to me, but it's just one of those, I don't know what we don't know, what we can and can't do in that, in that space.
It's highly regulated.
Yeah, and so that's, you know, just more questions about that, and then this is the time for that, but just, I wanna just, when I, when I watch a documentary, my brain starts going like, okay, what can we do? And um, so just keep that in mind, that I'd like to talk about that sometime, and I'll probably just connect with you, Debbie and Dr. Roberts, on adding that to an agenda for a meeting, but I, I just like to understand that more, and, and how can we um, make an effort to provide, I wouldn't, I don't wanna say a better meals, because I think the meals are great, but can we, can we make some choices, some healthier choices for the kids? And I don't know, again, that's just my thought. When I watch a documentary, so.
Nate, just so, just so you know, so I, I have a close relationship with the ladies that lead the Hunger Alliance, and they do all the, the state food services, the food, food programs, and they would be happy to zoom in on a board meeting and do a little presentation about that, so they can give you the listing of all the services and what they provide and what's available, and the reimbursement rates and all that stuff. So I'm happy to do that whenever you guys want.
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, I think we can, I can break, we can bring it up at this next board meeting. I don't know. Um, Debbie, might, can we add that? Just as a, as a talking point for the board to discuss, do we wanna even go down that road? Um, I do. I wanna. Just a quick, just to, just to put a little blip in there about child nutrition discussion, and we'll just talk about what Dr. Roberts just talked about. Do, do you wanna have a meeting with the, with these folks for that? Um, what was it called? Hunger? Sorry, one more time. Hunger Alliance?
Yeah, the Hunger Alliance. They, they manage all the uh federal programs for the state.
I don't wanna add too many different things going on at the beginning of the year, but I, I think this is important, and at least, at least part of a discussion for this coming Tuesday. You know, it'd be a blip, um, as far as the time, but I'd like to, and then I gotta cancel my Netflix, because this, this happens every time I watch. But anyway, it's important. So, anyway, any other questions or comments or fashion tips for today?
Fashion tips for you, Nate.
No fashion tips. All right. Not wearing a hat.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night. We'll, we'll see y'all tomorrow.